Order, start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, we had of all board members, president accounted for. First on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which is the minutes from September regular board meeting and the September financials and counts payable.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public comments. Got some people here, but nobody, nobody in the public. Oh, here we go. I don't have it.
Making the big entrance.
Yeah, you wanna, you wanna just do the students now?
Sure. Do I do the student part?
Yeah, so we are really excited to have Marilyn Gaston and Ally Friesner here. They are representing National Honor Society this month as two of our members, and I'm gonna just, they have a thing ready to share. So I'm gonna let them do their thing. I'll stand up for.
I wanna stand up.
Yeah. It just makes it feel a little more formal. So yeah, as you said, I'm Marilyn Gaston, this is Ally Friesner. We are seniors this year at Methodist Muskegon, and we just wanna talk a little bit about ours, what's going on with student life and the clubs that we're in, including NHS. So we are both seniors, and so all the seniors are going through the application process right now, which has been quite a lot. November first is creeping up. So if you, if you see a senior, just know that.
Be nice.
Yeah. We're a little on edge this week, but that's all right. As part of student council, we're starting planning our Christmas dance, and we're looking at our North Noel stuff. In environmental club, we are doing lots of cleanups, and we're looking at new projects to start around the school, as well as keeping up with the courtyard. And in the music department, the orchestra just had a concert. We have a choir concert coming up, lots of holiday things coming up. And then finally, we have this Veterans Day thing that Mr. Friesner is part of that's coming up too, which I thought Ally was gonna talk about, so.
So yeah, my dad is planning, Mr. Friesner is planning a Veterans Day like event where he's having a bunch of veterans come in from all around Muskegon County. And the interact club is helping to raise some money for that, so the veterans can hopefully come in and eat for free, and we can just kind of celebrate and uplift them. Interact's been doing a lot of other stuff. We kind of got it divvied up by grade right now, so I don't know exactly what the other grades are doing, but I know seniors are helping to raise money for a little boy in Africa named Miden, just to help him with school and stuff. What else was I gonna talk about?
French program.
French program. There's like, you guys might know, if you've been in the halls, you've seen like twenty exchange students here today from France. Marilyn and I both took part kind of in that program last year.
Kinda.
We did it two months, but not yet. So it's lovely to see them all here. If you guys didn't know, I also helped with the morning French program, which is like the second graders come in and just teach them basic stuff. That's been going really well. And stuff with NHS, we have inductions coming up very soon, like getting a bunch of new members. That'll be fun.
Yes, and also we have our blood drive coming up on Monday, so we have a lot of upperclassmen volunteering for helping out with that, and lots of people signed up. I am signed up to give a blood, my first time's kind of nervous, but it'll be great, hopefully. So that's coming up with NHS, and as you said, inductions, we'll get a ton of new members, and yeah.
When is your military day?
That is on Friday, November tenth, the day before Veterans Day. And I unfortunately cannot be there. I will be out of college with it, but I hope this is something better.
All right, Steve Tufekfalo, the financial committee reporter.
We did have a meeting just prior to this and discussed a little bit of what's going on with the ballots, the election coming up. We also reviewed all of September's financials. Traditionally, we would have had Patrick do his presentation at this meeting, but it worked out best for everybody's schedule. We put it off till November, so we, the audit is done, obviously, and we will have Patrick here with his presentation at our next meeting. And that's about it.
Thanks, Steve. Policy.
We talked about the different updates that the Neola group has worked on for us, as administrative staff and reduction recalls, revised online blended learning programs, student technology, acceptable use and safety, information security, and free and reduced lunch were topics that were discussed.
Thank you, Ms. Steve. And academic affairs.
We actually have had to reschedule that meeting, so we have not met since the last board meeting.
Okay, yeah. All right, we have two presentations tonight. First, Wilson Schultz, being better together.
Thanks, thank you guys. So, um, isn't that cool? To have the kids, like, say what's going on. They could have probably done this even better. So when I was thinking about what to talk about, this is really like the thirty thousand foot view of how the year has kind of started, where we're going, and then we'll dive in a little deeper. So I'm gonna kind of give you a sneak peek on some of the things, and, oh, hold on. There we go. Oh, I went too fast. So when I was thinking about what makes this special, talking about all the like fun stuff coming, and the one thing that we keep hearing is one school, one community, and it's hard to like, like not get emotional when you hear this, like what other community? Can you like have your school and everything there? And so we started this year with a theme as a staff, better together. Like that's our theme for our staff this year, and just really being intentional about everything that we do and how we can, how we're great individually, but collectively, how we can be together here within the walls of our school, but then also how can we stretch out into our community and tap into those resources and be better together there as well. So that's our theme this year. Our kids are seeing it, our staff's seeing it, it's kind of where we're going. We started off our PD with some fun, just appreciating some of our people, getting out into the community. You're gonna see some familiar faces, little Abbey Road representation there. Mindfulness, yoga, appreciating our school partnership with our Officer Nelson, Sean, who we just love, and a partnership with him, appreciating all that he does with all of us, and that famous rock photo that years and years of the traditions of everybody being out there. So we really set the school year off with the intention of having fun, but really being better together. So today, I'm just gonna talk really quickly about these specific areas and just give you kind of a sneak peek of how the year is going. So curriculum instruction, assessment, PBAS updates, and then just community partnerships. If you have any questions, obviously you guys can jump in, interrupt at any time. So curriculum instruction, we're really excited about this. This year, we are really diving into our content and really looking at our curriculum and having that vertical and horizontal alignment, so six through twelve, and then even eventually going down to the elementary, see where our gaps are, where our strengths, leaning into the resources from the ISD. So if you walked into our staff lounge, now conference room, you'd see some things that look like this, and it looks like a really messy like board, but what it was, was all of our ELA teachers sitting down and like macking up, what are they doing? What do they want to do? The ISD expert there saying, well, did you know about this? And how can you really like cross-curricular and make that better, and really talk about reading and writing strategies in science, and what does that look like? That is gonna be a really big focus of our PD this year, so when we talk at academic affairs, of what our school leadership team looks like, really wanting to hone in on our curriculum. We know our kids do well. We have great teachers, we have great families, we have great students, but we also know that we could really like be crushing it in a lot of areas. So how do we tweak those gaps and get even better? So this is just something kind of cool, tying in the resources from the county. This is a book that people across the county are reading, so our middle school is gonna do this book read together. Jerry Craft is gonna come and do New Kids, Jerry Craft, and then they're gonna have an author visit as well. So again, another example of how we're connecting within our school, but then we'll have an opportunity to reach out to other schools that are reading the same book and have conversations with that too. So just some fun ways. The assessment piece, we're growing in that. So this year, we've expanded our math testing. We always did it K seven, we're doing it K eight now. By moving it to eighth grade, we, it gives us the opportunity to look at the testing for three times a year, so we can do math and reading in fall, winter, and spring, and then that helps us to look at that data and be like, okay, what are we doing with this? How can we take that information and make those instructional tweaks, so that hopefully our kids can do better versus just doing the PSAT eight, nine in the fall, getting the information later, and not really having the time to like dive into it and make those changes. Speaking of PSAT and MSQT, say that ten times really fast, we just finished, but it was all digital this year. That was last week, Thursday, so we've had all of our juniors do that. It went off actually fairly well for the first time with all things digital. We learned some things. We did it in the gym because of spacing and time, and we might probably do that next time, like in classrooms. We would probably do it in some smaller groups and be intentional, but it was a good way to practice and give a kids, kids a good opportunity for that SAT, which will be all digital now. The good news with that is they say scores will be available sooner, so we heard as early as early November, mid-November, that we could possibly be hearing scores back from that, so we'll see. If you work with College Board at all, you know that, right? It's, it's, you know, it's kind of a fact. Speaking of College Board AP, we're gonna continue with that, have our kids growing with those courses, and we're rocking and rolling in that. And then something cool, I just wanna shout out this picture right here. This is Phoebe Schroeder, one of our colleagues. She's at Kent ISD, actually presenting about standards-based grading, so taking our assessment and what we do here at our school and expanding, sharing her knowledge and her passion. At Kent ISD, Paul and I just had a phone call from, I don't remember what school district though, last week, about the same thing. So it's kind of cool to have people reaching out and asking us how we're doing things and to be able to share some of our learning along the way. So if you see Phoebe, give her a shout out. She did an awesome job presenting in front of a group of educators and sharing how we use assessment to move forward. So here's a sneak peek, Ben, you were asking for this at the board meeting, so don't get too excited, there's more coming, but I had to give you a little. So this is just an example of the PSAT ten from spring, okay? So I just gave you a snapshot. So these two are how we are doing as a school, school and district, it's the same thing, and you can see really overall, this is the state, and then this is all, and you can see we're quite a bit ahead of most, which is, which is a good thing. So this is for math, so exceeds benchmarks, approaching benchmarks, and then this is not yet. So that's math, so we're above all of those averages. This is ELA, we're much stronger in ELA and still above average. The state as a whole is stronger in ELA, but this is the cool part. So if you dive into this, there's another piece that you can do instructional planning. So you can take that assessment, and you can run a report, and it actually breaks down how you did. So here's just a little sneak peek. So for example, if I took ELA, there's a whole bunch of subcategories, but it'll say, okay, command of evidence in your writing. These are the kiddos that are close to being on track, these are the ones on track, these are how they need to, the ones that need to strengthen their skills. And then if you click on this, you could dive into those and actually find out who the kids are, what are the gaps. So we talked in academic affairs last year a little bit about how do we get those kids that are right on the bubble, right? And like, how can we be[1302.32][1302.35]intentional about just getting them over the cusp? So these are, these are kind of the cool scores, like it's fun to see that we're doing well, and be like, yeah, we're doing well, like we're above average. We kind of always tend to be, that's sort of the trend, but this is where we're really diving into it and seeing like, how do we kind of move that needle a little bit more? So going back to that curriculum and instruction piece, how do we take the assessment, what we're doing, align that to what we're teaching, what our curriculum looks like, and what does our instruction look like? So that's kind of that set piece there. So sorry, Ben, just a teaser. More where that comes from later. And then PBIS. You guys know DK twelve, we've been crushing it with PBIS, so Ride With Pride continues. We've done three assemblies, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, we did those off separate. We have our high school PBIS, Ride With Pride kickoff assembly on Friday. Pretty much every Friday from here out, there will be an assembly for each grade level, so middle school, we each have one, and then we'll just celebrate positive behavior with our North Pride, giving out those pride tickets that you see Mrs. Knuth and Mrs. Christopherson doing, and really leaning on Officer Nelson, he's a good sport. I can't get him to dance out in front of the kids, but I am working on it. I'm trying, so if you see him, you can tell him that. Leaning on that, him and Officer Robar have been here a lot, and then just giving out certificates to celebrate kids. Eliza was one of our North Pride winners. So that is going strong, we're really excited about that. And then this is kind of cool. This is the part where it goes back to one school, one community. We have a new middle school, high school PTO starting, so we're really pumped about that. Again, leaning on our partnership with Officer Nelson, Chief Viret and Officer Robar, just really cool that we can call them up anytime that we have anything. They're often in our halls. Chief, he was just in my office on Friday telling me I had to get excited, and I was like, all right, and he goes, you knew about this? Yeah, I'm like, I know! So it's just, it's just super fun. The shout out to the community, my Methodist Church, they let us park there all the time. They're feeding our kids every Wednesday now. They've got pizza or coffee, and food's well table open, so our kids can just go. They're calling for coats, and just, they just have, they just take really well, good care of us. And so if you see them, tell them thanks, that's pretty cool. Family Financial Credit Union, this year, they're coming in, we're trying to get a student-run credit union in, doing some financial literacy courses, having them come in and teach some of that with our math classes and our econ classes. So again, connecting with that community in ways. Broadway Boot Camp's looking at doing the spring, helping to collaborate with our new ELA teacher who's really passionate about theater, to do possibly musical theater class in the spring. Just some ways, again, to bring in outside supports. And then this was CJ and Ally, representing at Rotary. So again, you see our North Muskegon kids out in our community. So we're just really excited about that. So really, that's it. I just wanted to give you like a zoom out view of how the year's going, where we're coming, a little sneak peek of what's to come. And I had to list all of these people because truly, we couldn't, none of us could do what we, what we do without all of you, with the team here, and I mean, everything from our custodial maintenance, bus driver. We're better together because it's all apart, so that's it. Yeah, any questions?
Oh, that's great. Great principle, too. Yeah.
Anything?
I'm excited to hear about the financial literacy piece.
Yeah. Well, we have our district math class, which John knows, does a lot of some of that stuff anyways, naturally, and the feedback that we get from kids is, we wish everybody had this experience, because they're talking about mortgages and credit card debt, and like how to do, you know, taxes and all of those types of things. So we're like, how can we bring that to, to so that all of our kids get a piece of it? So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, presentation number two.
All right, Denise is up.
Oh, gosh. Well, I'm very excited, and I'm sorry I couldn't present to you guys this summer, so, and I actually just had to write a few notes to piggyback off some things that John said that will expand on some things I had already put in here. So one of, oh, gosh. One of the really exciting things that's happening for North Muskegon is the TTA process, so the Technical Targeted Assistance through the ISD. We're in year one, so we actually have our first meeting on November seventh, and I've listed the team members there. And so this year, we're really just in the beginning of setting up the process, and I have some technical slides that I'll, that I put up here just for you kind of to have them, but we're really just starting the process. And our focus areas will be kind of the gap analysis, and when John was talking about that curriculum and kind of having that tier one curriculum and building that tiered process, and really that gap analysis is really something that I kind of started last year, kind of as a practice to knowing where we were going in our elementary school. I really worked hard with presenting the gen ed teacher's role in special education, and John and I just talked today about making sure I do that same presentation for middle school and high school, because as in special ed, we do a really good job of kind of knowing where our kiddos are and what they need, but really kind of where's that gap with their gen ed peers, and how do we work through that gap with accommodations and other things to make them be successful? So, and then just improving the quality of our IEPs and the process of doing that. So this is more the technical. This is kind of the ISD, the big picture. This is kind of their components of their general supervision and their IDEA accountability systems that they've kind of put at the ISD level, kind of that state performance, and then those data and results, and then the fiscal managemently effective dispute resolution, and then kind of those improvement correction incentives and those kinds of things. And that's what we're trying to do, we're just trying to get better at what we're doing. And then this is kind of that process, so this is where we're at year one. We're gonna assess our needs, and we're gonna plan. So that team that I had up there for you guys to see, we're gonna look at kind of a sampling of our IEPs within our school district, and we're gonna kind of take a look at what we're doing really well, and what we can improve on, and really focusing on making that, those IEPs a little, just stepping up our game a little bit in that regard. And then in two, we'll implement our plan, and then yours three through five, we'll monitor and adjust and evaluate, and then we'll just come back and we'll just keep doing that. So we'll continually work through the process, and the hope is by the end of that fifth year, that we as a district would be able to go through that process on our own after the ISD kind of helps support us, then, I mean, obviously, they continue with some oversight, but really that we would be able to build capacity and do that within our district. And then this is kind of that process of what we'll be doing this first year. So kind of October through February, we're gonna look at those ISD or the IEPs, and we're gonna analyze those, and we're gonna kind of use the ISD rubric that they've created for us. And then February through March, we'll come together, we'll kind of analyze that data that we found, and kind of those analysis of that, and kind of what's the root cause, and what are those PD opportunities that we need to make sure that we're giving to the staff. And then we'll develop that plan, April through August, to look at where we're headed, so. And that's just kind of what's happening that first year. And then just continuing that process as a district. And then just some things that I wanted to celebrate for where we're at this year. So we have a special education, our special education evaluation team, so our psychologist, our speech and language therapist, our social worker. Um, so our psychologist, our speech and language therapist, our social worker, um, we're coming together and they are having regular meetings once a month. And they're kind of working through the processes and procedures and the timelines and those roles and responsibilities. And that was a question I think I was asked several times last year is, I don't know what my role is. I don't know what I, I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing. And so um, I actually have a meeting with them next Monday and I have like a whole grid outline of what are rules and responsibilities and who take care of what and who sets up this meeting and who makes this phone call and who files this paperwork and just to make sure that we're not missing things and we're not duplicating. Um, and we're just dividing um, based on, and really taking on who has relationships with families and all of those into consideration, but making sure that everybody knows what their job is in the process. Um, and then that Gen Ed collaboration, um, the tier two meetings and processes. And um, John's really started and John, they've started that process and um, the special ed team is a part of that just because um, yes, we're at the tier three, but we want to know what's going on at tier one and tier two so that we um, can sort of keep that um, just keep that relationship open and being able to give those good interventions and help those kids. And we kind of just talked about those kids on the cusp and how are we going to help them? Um, and then um, we want to be able to kind of monitor that process for our special ed kiddos too. Um, and then weekly meetings, I meet with John Van John weekly. Um, sometimes we don't have a lot to talk about. The beginning of the year, we've had a lot to talk about because there's been a lot happening in special ed. And we've had a lot of move-ins, um, we've had a lot of 30-day placements, and we've had a lot of um, evaluations that we've had to do. So um, it's been a busy start to our year. And for me, this was my first two months, September and October. I wasn't here last year. So um, this was all new for me. Um, and then that general role in um, special ed as I talked about. And then we do have a new psychologist, um, who is fantastically amazing and she's doing a really great job, not only in her role of the psychologist. And even though she's here like two days a week and she's more part-time for us, she really can keep track of things and she's doing a great job of facilitating some of those roles and responsibilities. And she's also helping with that tier two team and being able to like look at that data and how to analyze that. And that goes right along with that TTA process that we're going through. And then professional development. Um, I've just pushed my way in and John keeps saying, no, you can't come. No, he doesn't.
That's his first response.
We're pretty stingy with our professional development, but I, last year I quietly said, guys, I really want time with special ed. Guys, I really want time. And so they've been so gracious and we've worked that out so that I have been able to offer um, professional development. Um, the monthly paraprofessional training, um, I'm working with the Council for Exceptional Children. They have um, a program with, that kind of focuses around the um, high leverage practices that we want to be using in instruction, that they have those for paraprofessionals. So I'm going to be working with the paraprofessionals on that and also on some, they have a behavior component. So I'll be using those five this year um, for training with the paraprofessionals. Um, the transition training, um, the um, middle school and high school, at November 1st, we'll be working with the ISD and they'll be talking with what should those transition? What should those post-secondary IEPs look like? And they'll be doing some training, but then we'll also be analyzing some of our um, IEPs. So again, kind of still in that same TTA realm, just being able to kind of work through those. Um, and middle school is going to be a part of that because we really should be talking about transitions when kids start to turn 14. And sometimes we're just waiting a little bit longer. So wanting to just make people aware of that. And it's been really exciting because our place, our work-based learning program that we've done, we had two students in high school who've gone out and actually Wesco and Valkyrie, um, they were approached and they um, signed up to um, take on more kids for that work-based learning program for our transition kids. So that was really exciting because they live in this community, they work in this community. It's one community, kind of like John was talking about. So that was really, and it wasn't a hard sell at all. They were like, yeah, sure. And one of the kids said, I love Wesco. I can stock those shelves. I know where everything is. So then when we asked and they were very willing to partner with us. So that was exciting. Um, the functional behavior assessment and the positive behavioral support plans. Um, I just went to the training with um, our elementary social worker, um, and our speech and language um, professional with us. And we kind of went through that process because we've kind of done it in pieces and parts and we hadn't done it all together. So really just looking at some of our kiddos that are coming in DKK. We're um, seeing some different things countywide on behaviorally and how can we take a look at those behaviors and what are the functions? And then we can really put in those good interventions to support kids. And um, special ed time, they're giving me that time for training on PD, so I appreciate that. And then I have a weekly newsletter that I'm in the process of, um, just because I'm not here all day, every day. And I would like to just get little pieces out, um, to continue to improve the processes and procedures. So I'm working on that. And then. Any questions? Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Lots of good info tonight. Okay, next, uh, we've got some new business. First is the first reading of policy updates. This is Bee talked about those a little bit.
Went over it at the policy committee level, but uh, if anyone had any input on any, um, just let us know before the second reading. Um, and we'll make sure that, uh, get that word out to the whole board and um, better educate ourselves before the second read because at that meeting, it's also approval. And it's November 13th. November 13th. So if you've got any questions on the, your first read, just let us know and be prepared for the vote on November 13th.
Is anybody, any questions at this time? Okay, thank you.
Um, I guess I will just add this though, Will. The vast majority of the changes are due to um, case law, um, adjustments and then um, uh, some basic typo type things that the paralegals caught and they're just cleaning some of it up. Um, so between those two items, that's, that's the main focus of it. So, yep.
Yeah, I skimmed through most of those and, and the only one I sort of caught my eye was the artificial intelligence addition. And that's all new, right? This language here?
Yeah. And really, that's just making its way in. Um, I, I have a feeling, um, pretty, pretty good educated guys, like would say, we're going to start to see much more policy on AI coming. That's getting us a start. And then um, at the county level, there's already a group um, that I'm a part of that is looking at trying to do some policy things countywide. So we're not all out there doing our own thing. So, but that gets us, that gets us at least a start.
Okay. Great. Alright, any other questions or comments on policy updates? Alright, uh, alright, another uh, long-term, seems like we've had a few of these recently, uh, retirement.
Yeah, I'd just soon skip over this agenda item.
Yeah, we always want to.
Not approved.
John and I, and many others, I think, have tried to talk her out of that, out of totally selfish reasons, but um, you, we've got the letter. So she's moving on and uh, gonna do some fun stuff. Uh, I, I know this sounds a little bit cliche, but um, we're not going to replace Jan Schumacher. There will be somebody else in her room next year, but we're not going to replace Jan Schumacher. So yeah, you see her letter. I don't, I don't have anything more to add because I know but everyone at this table has lots of stuff rolling through their head right now and it's all positive toward Jan. So that's all I got.
She's a wonderful teacher. Absolutely wonderful. And it was great working with her.
I will motion to approve her resignation with regret.
Support.
Alrighty, it's been moved and seconded. I can say all those in favor because none are in favor, but all those that approve, please say yes.
Yes.
Alright, um, yeah, those are always tricky, but uh, we always seem to get great new people too.
Yep, that's true.
It's always tough to lose people that have been such great additions to the school over the years. But we always do manage to find great new people too.
I must say, I like how her, her resignation letter was in like really big font.
Once a teacher, always a teacher.
Alright, and then as part of the updated agenda that went around, um, it's the long-term lease between the city and the school for basically the athletic facilities. Bert, do you want to provide a little background there?
Yeah, first I need to apologize that I missed not having it in the original packet that went out. Um, it was a, one of the main things that I needed to make sure happened this month. So um, this was originated, uh, up, we, we had a long, we've had a long-term lease with the city in place. Um, it was pretty outdated and it, it was definitely outdated if we are going to continue moving forward with looking at Bond project in partnership with the city. So Trune um, pulled this together for us. Uh, Sam and I have tweaked it um, to um, cover some different specific things to the city and to the school, um, all with the blessing of Trune. And this was, this addition of it is the final version and it was approved by the city council last week. Our approval um, basically allows us to put this new lease in place and continue to move forward with um, partnering on potential projects with them. If we didn't have this, we couldn't move forward with that.
If, if there are questions, I, the fourth paragraph kind of says it all. We cannot build on their property with public funds unless we have a long-term lease in place.
My strong recommendation is that uh, we pass this.
Uh, I would motion to approve the long-term lease with the city of North Muskegon as presented.
Support.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the updated long-term lease, um, 50-year lease, starting next May if we, if the bond is passed at that time. Is there any other questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alrighty. Thank you and thanks to uh, Jen and Steve for going to the meeting. I heard you guys did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
That's not what I heard.
Heard it was a pretty good, heard it was a pretty good team up.
I think you, I heard you both did a good job. Uh, and then here's the um, regular reminder from Christie that uh, if we want to go to the fall dinner on November 29th, do please let her know prior to the next meeting, probably earlier than that if you can. I've been to several of them. They're always, they're pretty interesting and I think worth going to if, if you can go.
We have Lisa so far.
We have Lisa signed up so far.
I like them. I don't know why.
Go ahead and put me down. I am not leaving as hurriedly as I thought for taking my dad south.
It's Wednesday, the 29th.
So if anyone wants to join, Lisa, Steve and I, just like Christie or myself.
Yeah, I'll, I'll poke you down for that too.
It is a good, it is a good meeting.
What the heck? We're being well represented.
Alright, um, board comments? Oops. Our students.
They came from swim events, like showers. They're like, please go home and do our homework. And I told them that.
That's alright. I'm just going to give them a comment, an opportunity to comment.
Those two don't sit still very long.
No, I don't remember where we started last time, so we'll start.
Okay, um, so I was at the city council meeting last week, uh, and they did approve the lease. However, like they, I feel like there might be some disconnect with what we hope to do and what they interpret that as. So I think it might be useful if there was, it's not a task force, but that's what I'm going to call it, uh, between us and the city to kind of like sit down and talk through some of those details. Uh, since we have to have their written approval before we do anything, um, I think it would be beneficial if we got on the same page sooner rather than later. Let's see. Uh, this weekend, we had two of our sophomores, uh, one being my daughter, the other one being Daquan Bates. Yep. Um, they went up to Petoskey with uh, Rotary and they are, like that was their final interview basically to see if they can be foreign exchange students next year. It's a great thing. I don't want to send my kid away. I'm going to be real sad the whole time. But it was, it was great. Like the, the district for Rotary went from Holland to uh, the Sioux in Canada and um, there were only 20 kids there and two of them were from North Muskegon. So I thought that was pretty cool. So they can go out into the world and, yeah. Yeah, it's gonna be terrible.
Well, I wanted to thank our student presenters. I thought that was a great presentation. And I like our new format of it's not always the same people so that we have someone here all the time. I like that. Um, and then our, both our presentations today, um, really, there's a lot of good information in there that I'm excited about and can't wait to see how it goes and I want to do some more deep dives.
Cool. Um, yeah, I want to thank the presenters and their students, um, and go Norse football and all of our other fall sports that were really successful this year. Um, it, so something not about our district, but Jen brought up the standard-based grading that Phoebe presented to, and it just reminded me that um, yeah, we were kind of on the leading edge of that. And being a University of Michigan parent now, they're actually incorporating that into their classes and I don't know how many or what, but like their math classes, for example, they have these like masteries that the kids are given multiple attempts to pass. And that's all of their, like the core information that they really need before they can move on to the next unit type of thing, is all being assessed in these masteries that they can practice multiple times. They have huge question databases so that, um, the randomized questions are always different so that it's, it's um, valid, a valid uh, testing. Um, and then the formal testing that they're taking is the more difficult concepts and the things that the kids are building on. But all that like core stuff that they really need to be able to progress is being done in a standard space testing. And I just thought that that was really pretty awesome to see a university of the caliber of Michigan, you know, kind of taking to the next step. Because I think a lot of people have sort of questioned, like, you know, why, how, what are we doing to our kids when they move on to college and they don't have that opportunity? And, and you know, the universities are, are, you know, validating the, the um, philosophy that, that you guys worked so hard to sort of incorporate in that. And you know, if you don't have those building blocks, it doesn't do you any good. And uh, so I was really a little bit surprised when I saw that and I thought it was pretty awesome. Like I said, I don't know how many courses they do that. Richard's actually not in that math sequence that's using that, but a couple of his science classes are using some variations on that. So it seems like it's a pretty well-accepted um, thing down there at, at University of Michigan. And I just thought I would bring that back to, to all of you and, and you know, it's kind of the next step, I think, to what we've been doing here for, for years. And I thought it was really pretty cool. But math is still impossible.
Drake Calp 101.
So, so apparently I'm having the wrong conversations with my son at college. More like, did you survive the weekend?
I didn't, I didn't say I got this information from my son.
But uh, back to the presentations tonight, um, Jen, thank you for calling up the key metrics. I love it. And I know you specifically pointed me out, so I was like thinking, yeah, I asked that. Um, and, and all the presentations, uh, special ed as well. Thank you. Uh, that was, that was fantastic. Um, yeah, uh, good sports season. I'm, I'm happy to see that uh, the finance committee, everything's going well. Unfortunately, I will not be here in the next meeting, so uh, will not see the uh, the audit um, presentation, but uh, I'm sure I'll have a lot, Steve will take a lot of good notes for me.
I'll have a book for you.
So, uh, other than that, I'm good. Okay, thank you, Ben.
Uh, I'd also like the presentations. That's always what makes these. I also like the presentations, that's always what makes these meetings interesting and keeping us up to date as to what's going on. So I always really appreciate those and having multiple sources of those tonight was great. And then the one thing I was glad to hear on the policies about the artificial intelligence, that's going to be kind of an ongoing process. I've been hearing a lot about that. It's certainly going to be a challenge for educators or immediate challenge in the long-term. And I don't know, I don't think anybody knows where it's going to go. But I'm glad that that's being looked at by such a large group because that's going to be a big challenge, I think. So a big opportunity, but a big challenge. Thanks for that.
I certainly echo everything that was said. Thank you for all those great and informative presentations. And that's really about it. Thank you.
Sounds like we're off to a really good start. And I'm sure the Norsemen will just keep drudging, make, make us into the greatest school there is.
Great, thank you, Miss Steve.
I just had two things. If you haven't already voted by absentee, please make sure you do so or vote on, on November 7th for the two different ballot issues. They're not conflicting ballot issues, they support each other, so there's two of them on there. And that vote is November 7th unless you do it absentee. And then I appreciated everyone thanking the presenters today. And now you know exactly why I'm really, really excited with where we're heading. Those guys over there.
Okay, alright. Everything else okay? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.